Testing. Testing. Testing again. Does that sound okay? Welcome, everyone. Let's go ahead and get started. I now call to order. One moment. Thank you, Madam President. I now call to order this joint school board assembly meeting. It is Friday, March 4, 2022. We are noticed from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Ms. Grant, would you call the role for the school board members, please?
President Bellamy.
Present.
Vice President Holloman. Member Donley. Member Higgins. Member Lessons.
Here.
Member Jacobs.
Present.
And Chair... Member Wilson is on her way. She may be a few minutes late.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Ms. Beneklausen, would you call the role for the Assembly members, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. LaFrance.
Here.
Mr. Constant.
Here.
Ms. Allard.
Here.
I understand Mr. Dunbar will be just a little late this morning. Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Perez Verdia. Mr. Peterson. Ms. Quinn Davidson. Mr. Rivera.
Present.
Mr. Weddleton. Ms. Alatell.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Bellamy, would you read the land acknowledgement, please?
Yes. On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Venaina people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout the generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational opportunities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of its indigenous people. Shanann.
Thank you, President Bellamy. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us here today, and thank you to the board and the school district for hosting us here. We will move on to minutes of previous joint meeting. We have minutes from the December 10, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved to approve by Mr. Rivera and seconded by President Bellamy. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any opposition to approving the minutes from the December 10, 2021 joint meeting? Seeing no opposition, the minutes are approved. Next is approval of agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
And the second?
Second.
A motion to approve has been made by President Bellamy and seconded by Member Lessons. Board Member Lessons, is there any discussion? Seeing no one in the queue or anyone raising their hand on Zoom, seeking unanimous approval of the agenda. Seeing no opposition, the agenda is approved. And I just want to remind folks to be sure to speak into the microphone. And I know we have a couple other people who are on their way or getting on Zoom. So our first item, D, is financial planning. Fiscal year 2022 to '23 preliminary financial plan and budget. I will turn to Dr. Bishop.
Yes, Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Madam President. We have a general overview of the ASD budget for you. And with me today to assist is our CFO, Jim Anderson, and to his right is our OMB Senior Director, Andy Ratliff, and behind me will be Deputy Superintendent Dr. Stock. So he'll pipe up from that mic. Sorry, some of our mics were out, so we're spaced out around the room. With that, we're happy to share that the board passed the budget on February 22nd, and of course, the first round of that went to you last Tuesday. And we're going to share some, a little more detail than, or a summary, if you will, of those 450-some-odd pages, just to give a 30,000-foot overview. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr... Or we'll just use first names, Jim, to share the timeline, just to ground us back in this work.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Slower closer. So we did drop off the budget books. It's about 482 pages, so I think every Assembly member should have received that already. And I'll go through the next slide real quick on the timeline. Really doesn't change by charter. We always pass our budget at the school board in February to get it to the Assembly as quickly as possible in March. This is the first reading of the budget, and I believe it'll be an action item on the 15th, as we discussed with the clerk. There are multiple education-related funding bills in Juneau moving around. As with all decisions made in Juneau, there's always the possible chance that we'll have a revised budget at the end of the school year or later.
All right, so this budget, when you ask yourselves, what does it do in general and summary? Of course, it addresses the general fund deficit, prioritizes people-to-teacher ratios, and maintains educational programs. And we always like to share that those ratios are staffing ratios, not class caps. There are some states that have legislation that have class caps, but these are strictly a budgeting metric, if you will. It does use ESER funds to maximize recovery from COVID-19, and we have supplemental information for you as the second item on this section of our budget today, or the agenda today, rather. It does redirect resources to focus on school board goals as well as redesigns educational supports to focus on learning outcome gaps, which is part of the school board's goals. We're going to start with the school board's core values and beliefs. It's very important for us that throughout, from our classrooms, our families, really, to our classrooms, up to the school board, to the government body of the Assembly, that everyone knows that there's an alignment. There is a through line from what we say we're going to do to what we actually do. And so the beliefs are potential. The opportunity for each student to reach his or her potential. High expectations are fostered in the district. We are accountable to the public, and over the last six years, that's demonstrated through multiple, everything from our CPNC, where is a project, how much does it cost online? That someone can look up, to our data, to most recently, the number of COVID cases in a particular grade level at a school. And so I and the team take that very seriously and are, sometimes to our detriment, overly transparent, I think, because then we offer more questions. Safety is always a priority, and when we do send out surveys, obviously, and rightfully so, safety is a number-one concern and is embedded in all that we do. And our responsiveness, that we do always hear, because we've all been educators, or been students, rather, when I was a school, or it should be done this way. Just like our world has changed, I'm hoping that no one on our staff believes that it should be done the only one way or the way it was when I was in school. Many times, we all believe we're experts because we were educated in a school, but I would say that our teachers, having went on, and they have learned new skills, and we should take the educators of today in mind when we design programs. So getting to the board goals, they were established and then reestablished prior to... Established prior to the pandemic, and the feedback with the community, kind of the roadshow, was going on right before the pandemic. The pandemic hit, they were put off. During the year last year, when we were home, we did have multiple Zoom sessions, open-door sessions, things like that, to share transparency. We did that again. They were officially adopted in December, and then they were officially adopted three times by the new board over the summer. We had three different work sessions where the new board, four members being new, came to the same conclusion that, boy, our community really did tell us this, what was priority. Our community really did want these values and this vision. So again, not to be too in-depth, reading proficiency, of course, math proficiency, we want the skills and then the experiences that lead to college, career, and life readiness, really for our workforce, to meet kids' dreams. With that, we go into the guardrails, which are the values, and the board listened to what our community valued. And these are written, and I think I've shared it before, kind of like the Constitution, like you shall not, or the Ten Commandments. So they're really meant, in theory, to say, get the job done, but these are the things that don't do to get... You know, don't let this happen, getting your job done. And that's what it's for, so that the board isn't managing the district. In theory, that this is meant to just say, these are the values that our community has told us. So don't leave student groups underrepresented in lottery and application-based programs, and those are specialized programs. Not... We will not operate without a plan for diverse or culturally responsive workforce. We will not allow unsatisfactory employee performance go unidentified or unaddressed. And we won't operate elementary schools without mental health services. And so that is just the foundation, if you will, for how we built our budget. Again, taking into account the alignment that when our community informed the board of their values and beliefs, that we will operate schools with those values and beliefs as well as the vision for what they want in an education. And to talk about, so how do you operationalize something like that? From words on a poster to actually getting it done? Dr. Stock's going to take the next category.
And if I could just interject quickly, that we were joined on Zoom by Mr. Dunbar at 10:05, and also Mr. Perez Verdia. Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. The graphic in front of you is just a simple attempt to represent the organization of the work. And as everyone here knows, our budgets should align to the work. And so the districts have always had some version of a strategic plan and action plans and goals and things like that. But what's unique about this graphic is an attempt to represent how we've organized to get the board's goals and guardrails accomplished. So you'll see a ring of circles there. They represent the goals, reading, math, college, career, life, et cetera. And each one of those little groups has a lead, and each of those leads represents a group. When you put it all together, there are hundreds of people who work on the work. And what's a little bit unique is that we're utilizing our professional management teams, who are sort of the glue that go back and forth and help with all the logistics of implementing all these things. Just as a simple example, even an initiative like summer school, which is involved in the reading and math goals, requires 30 different divisions to work together to implement the $2.8 million and how to get that all done in a way that organizes all the divisions, from HR to payroll to finance to tutors and everyone else. So this just shows that work and how they all report up to a strategic plan task force. All of that to align to the goals and guardrails, which is aligned to the budget. And so to explain the next slide, Jim, our CFO, will talk a little bit about how those funding priorities start to come together.
Thanks, Dr. Stock. So as all of those different work groups developed initiatives, ideas, or needs, they would come up to the budget work group, and we would first try to categorize them as to whether they were a one-time funding-type thing or a multi-year. And then we would look at all the different funds available, and you can see on this chart lots of different grants to include recently federal relief funds and start looking for the right type of money. If it's a short-term thing, then a grant is great. But if it's a long term, then it's less important. It's more important to try to find general funds for that. So this just gives you an idea of how we looked at every one of those initiatives that popped up. And if you go to the next slide, Dr. Stock will show you a better example.
Just to show the complexity of it all, every one of these initiatives crosses literally hundreds of different funds, and within those, all the object codes that go with it. So everything from the general fund, Title I, Title II-A, Title III, Title IV, all kinds of versions of grants that the district runs, and the ESER funds, which have always been a topic of conversation over the recent years. But it just tries to get at and capture this notion that one line item in one budget that might say, say, for example, say contracted services. Well, there could be contracted services that cross over into the reading goal, the math goal, different contracts that would go out to different development firms to support us in that. Could be different software that goes into the whole hardware software. So the point of this slide is just to show that it's... You can't line item out a budget line item and understand exactly what all goes behind it without digging clear down into the weeds of the working groups, because all of those line items could be crossing multiple funding objectives, multiple divisions. And so it's highly complex, which is why we've been organizing around this way with our professional project management, which is helping be the glue that pulls all those logistics together. And now Jim will talk a little bit about the school funding.
So we've been talking publicly, really, for the last couple of years, about the base student allocation, which really does determine how much funding we're going to get. Has... That has stayed the same for, when you get into next fiscal year, seven straight years of the same base student allocation. But what has been difficult is trying to find a way to visually portray, really, when do we run out of funds? We talked about federal relief funds, and frankly, all around the community, there were a lot of people that wanted to help Dr. Bishop out by giving her good ideas on where she could spend that money, and they're very, very helpful. But we did focus it on education, and you'll see that a little bit later. So if you look at the dark blue bars, the 5930 is the base student allocation. You'll see a bunch of bars on top of the blue. So since Dr. Bishop's first year, we use general fund money almost every year to really minimize the number of staff that we would have to reduce when we had a fiscal deficit. You'll also see that the state gave us extra money a couple of years in FY '20 and FY '19, and that helped a lot. And then over the last couple of years, we've heavily relied on ESER I, II, and III funds to be able to develop a budget. So this current fiscal year, we allocated about $50 million of ESER II or ESER III money, and that's really how we were able to fully reopen schools and keep the district operating this year. We won't spend all of it because we didn't hire everybody that we hoped to hire, which is a comment across our community, and that will be reallocated. If you look at FY '23, next year's budget, you can see that we very much did, again, rely on ESER III, but there's just not enough remaining without legislative actions in FY '24 to be able to maintain the same standard of capabilities that we have today.
And I'd like to add, the funds do need to be expended by September of 2024. And that's why it's there, September. And so it's the beginning of the year, so hopefully we'll utilize those. But we really did this graphic in an effort to communicate better with the state. As you know, when we use the syntax of "we've been flat-funded", the dollar amounts don't show flat. You see it growing. It's just the type of money. And basically, we've been saved by the seat of our pants every time, or utilized, the board has utilized upwards to 4 to 8 million to keep functioning, even given the lack of support for, you know, just the CPIU increasing. So you know, we know, the cost of doing business goes up every year. It's exceptionally going up this year. But when you go to Juneau and they say, no, you've received more money at the... You know, they look at the aggregate. They don't really separate these out to show, how does it spend and how does it last? So this year, to prep our board, to have the kinds of conversations they need to have, we don't use flat funding overall. We'll say the BSA has been flat-funded, and these other inputs have been in here to kind of save the day. Just like we don't want our families, our homes, to live from paycheck to paycheck, a school district of this size with about 44,000 students and 6,000 employees should not live paycheck to paycheck.
Thank you. And if I could pause to go to Mr. Weddleton, who has a question? You have to turn it on yet. It should show a green light.
Oh, there we go. Okay. So a question on the units here. So this is per student, like, so if I look at this far-right bar, fiscal year '24, 5,930 per student.
No.
I have another slide. It's about three or four slides from now. We'll walk through the foundation formula. We start with the average daily membership, which is...
I got that. I just don't know the units here. Is this in thousands?
Oh, this is all in terms of base student allocation.
Okay, so, okay.
I made everything be apples to apples instead of showing total dollar amounts for what we're short and converted everything to base student allocation equivalent.
And it's technically not per student, it's per FTE.
Right, okay. That's... Yeah, I was being generous. Okay, thanks. I didn't know if the units were thousands or more. Okay, so is this all the... I mean, you have the stack with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 sources, but you also have, like, federal grants and so on that could also be stacked on there? Does this cover everything?
And those are, though, tied to programs that you have to spend them on. So they're not for your general fund. They are strung to different actions. So you'll see in your budget book that you have federal grants, but federal grants cannot be, because of the supplant rule, they... We can't take away our general funds and put those in.
Okay, so this is...
The grants that are allowed to be used generally is put in there. That's what we have. The ones that are not, don't show up here.
Okay.
This is really operating funds.
All right, thanks.
And as a...
And if you look at the gaps, you will see gaps as you look at the red line on the Inflation-Proof BSA. Those were the years that we did have some staff reductions, but we also closed two schools, merged five programs. Dr. Bishop stood up Alaska Middle College School, and because it has such a low overhead, it's actually the cheapest of all of our high schools at about $10,000 per student. And when you look at all of our comprehensive high schools, they average between $13,000 to $18,000 per student, depending on Title I and all the other funds that go into it. But Alaska Middle College has really helped out ASD in the last four or five years. And then she worked with the Lower Yukon School District and did a partnership with King Tech in their Kusovac Academy, where they fund the entire third tier of classes for CTE, but they don't have enough students to fill all the spots. So it opened up all of these new opportunities for our students at no additional cost. So we've done a lot of things to try to make that red line not look like a gap, but ultimately, the federal relief money will run out, and it will run out in FY '24.
Thank you. And any follow-up, Mr. Weddleton?
Are you going to get more discussion of the ESER funds later on? We are.
Very specific. And I have two other members in the queue, Mr. Constant and then Ms. Quinn Davidson. Mr. Constant?
Thank you. Thank you. This might be a question for another day. I'm just going to put it up on the table. Mr. Trainee's been gone for a while, from the body, and one of his main windmills that he was tilting at was the rebasing of the state formula. And I've been seeing lots of publications that establish that the Matu area has the highest per capita income of anywhere in the state now because lots of wealth has moved out of Anchorage to there. So the question is, are we seeing any progress on the question of getting a rebasing done so that Anchorage students aren't ripped off?
I'll answer that. We actually are. It is being discussed by our legislators. They're seeing it more and more. And for those that don't know, so when you... We'll go through the formula. You'll see a little graphic later. But you start with the area that this was in, and Anchorage is the one, meaning that there are no multipliers, that we're supposedly the cheapest place to educate a child. That is no longer true. And really, when I moved here six years ago, I could tell you that this was not the cheapest place to educate. I came from Matu, and it certainly was less expensive up there. So there is... I know that Member Donley has worked. We've worked with ISER. We... There is traction and discussion now about that. There's also fear that once you open it up, they're not only going to go after this part of the formula, they're going to go after others. So there's always this trepidation in that regard. But there's... Our folks are talking about it.
Thank you. It really is... It's an equity issue, and especially now if we're going on seven years of a dynamic where we aren't the number one, but we're being treated like the number one. That's every one of those kids who's being, you know, short-changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I want to note that Mr. Dunbar has moved from Zoom to the room, and Ms. Quinn Davidson is next in the queue, and then Mr. Donley.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Maybe this question's coming too early. I've just been leafing through the budget book as you've been talking. And it looks like, so at least through all the elementaries, almost all of them have gone down in FTEs. Can you talk about the process for determining...
That's coming up.
Okay.
Would you like us to do it now or when we get to the...
I can answer it real quick. If you look at Appendix G in the budget book, it will show you the general fund versus ESER FTE, and then you'll see that it didn't really go down. It's what type of money was used to fund them. I mean, they did go down if projected enrollment was going to go down. But when you look at Appendix G, you will see that it's not as dramatic once you roll...
So this is just general fund?
That's just general funds. And then Appendix G shows the ESER III money.
So it's not that every elementary school is losing several teachers? Okay, great. It looks dramatic.
If you look at this, and this is about a quarter of the whole slide, a quarter of all the money for teachers, pretty much, is covered.
So do you have anything... You don't have anything like this? It includes all the funding? Because this sort of shows a picture that's not actually...
Well, we'll show you the PTR and that, you know, how it goes together. And it's really how we have to present our budget to the state. I mean, there's a code that you follow. And so that budget is written in the form of the code. That's why we put the appendix in there, so that we would show that.
Okay, I'll take a little...
What the state is concerned about is the general fund or the operating funds, because they want to know what their share is. What we do with grants and all the other local funds, they're less concerned about.
And it's definitely good for them to see the impacts of their decisions, which is if we didn't have ESER funds, a bunch of teachers would be laid off. So, okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn Davidson. Next is Mr. Donley, and then Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Donley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As far as the district cost differential in the state education funding formula, yeah, it's absolutely broken. It's screamed out for a new assessment of that for, I guess we're going on almost 20 years now since it's been done. It was anticipated to be done at least every decade, and it's been coming up on, I think, 18 years since it's been done last. It's way out of whack. I'm really fearful that the current inflation of housing prices, is housing price in Anchorage area is going to even make it worse as far as the actual costs for... To this district versus other districts. At one point, there were estimates of it was costing our students up to $30 million a year, the district, that we should have been getting funds for. So it's a very, very significant amount of money. And it's been an ASD priority for at least the last six years that I can remember, or five years. It's been on our priority list.
The problem is, is that without new money being put into the fund, you would take that $32 million from someone else. Therein lies the problem.[1777.47]
To put it in perspective, Fairbanks and Matsu are tied together at 1.07 versus one for us. So it's tough to get enough legislators to want to change it when they know that the next two biggest districts are the ones that are going to lose money. And when you look at the formula in general and the district cost factor, like Bering Straits is 1.998. But the one point, the difference between one and 1.07 is significant because it's at the very beginning of the formula on the second step. And everything else is multiplied. So it is a significant change, but that's why it's so difficult is if you live in Fairbanks or Matsu, closely followed by Kenai and Juno, they all know winners and losers if you change that. And they don't know where they'll fall out.
Actually, just to, for a mind's eye reason, if you could flip to that slide, the foundation formula picture. So what we're talking about is here, see where their little pictures are where the school? You have a school size factor and then you have the district cost factor. And the money, depending on where your school is located and the size of your school, depends on how much money. And so that's why we're focused on the size of the schools too, because you get money, it's at the very end of your thing. So we'll go back to this in more detail. But when we say multipliers this, you're going to take that unit that Member Weddleton talked about at 5930. And that one unit FTE multiplies through this to have a larger number at the end. And that's when we, when we throw multipliers around, this around, that around, school size factor, cost error differential, that's all in this formula. And so we are very deliberate in opening schools, closing schools, changing school status like we did with King Tech, all to maximize state funding. All of those actions have been to support kids and maximize state funding.
And Madam Chair, I would just say it's gotten so bad at this point. And it's an objective standard. It's not a subjective standard. It's an objective standard that we're being unfairly discriminated against our kids. It might be time to consider we all get together and, and pursue some litigation.
I was having the same exact thought.
Thank you, Mr. Donley. Next is Ms. Kennedy and then Mr. Dunbar. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, it's, it's very interesting. Because the formula is what it is, every school district has challenges every year to try to figure out what their funding is going to be, because you don't necessarily know what kind of students you're going to have. You don't know necessarily what your special needs are. Certainly your intensive needs. And, and all those numbers really do fluctuate, especially, I would think, in a district as, as large as the Anchorage School District. But anyway, to a certain extent, the challenges and the conversation, I don't think has changed in over 20 years. And, you know, Mr. Donley was mentioning when the foundation formula was crafted the way it was. I remember participating in that conversation as a PTA president. And it was all about trying to get whatever would help Anchorage basically get their fair share. So the conversation, like I said, has been ongoing. This isn't really anything new. And the kinds of fluctuations and changes that a district sees every year is always going to be a challenge. So one of the questions though that I have is in regard to the fact that the school district is on a different calendar frequency than the state is. And I noticed back on the, on the chart, when you were talking about the funding for individual years, you just used the FY '22 or FY '23. And so I just wanted clarity on that in terms of how you're using that. So is the FY '21, is that actually the '21, '22 school year? Or is that the 2020, '21 school year? So in other words, if we're looking at clear out there at the fiscal year '24, is that 2023, '24 or is that 2024, '25? Thanks.
Yeah, that's a great question. The district and the state are on the same fiscal year and the municipality is on calendar year for your fiscal year. So anytime we say fiscal year '24, it's always the start of the year was 2023 and then the second semester is 2024.
So you can just remember it. When school ends is that fiscal year.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. That helps because what I'm looking at then is the fact that if you're looking at the fiscal year '24, that's really the fall of 2023, which you're not actually working on that budget yet. But just projecting out that when you get to that point, you're going to, you, you can kind of project the idea that there'll be this shortfall and that you would need the base student allocation to be increased in order to just keep pace. And, you know, and I certainly understand that. But I guess I just want to make sure that really we're not, your current budget or the budget that you're working on for 2022 and '23, you're kind of safe at this point. You're really not having to look at any kind of raise in the BSA at this point. You're just trying to look out for the, for the following year. Is that safe to say? Thanks.
Well, there, there are, through the chair and president to Member Kennedy, there's, there's several different bills in Juno right now. One is a $50 million outside the formula, one-time money, which would equate to about 13 million for ASD. Then there are bills on how to split the percent of market value for the permanent fund earnings reserve, 7525, with 50% of the 75 going towards education. And that's Representative Spawnhold's bill. Then you have Representative Story's bills, 272 and 273, which do slightly increase BSA. And then after fiscal year '24 would be a permanent CPI inflation-proofed formula.
But your question was, how are we next year? Yes, we're fine. It is for the year after.
Well, I just wanted to point out that if there is a bill that increases BSA as early as next year, we're certainly not going to oppose it.
True.
Because, so I was almost there. Because I know the fiscal cliff's real. I can see it. Andy sees it. We know it's coming. So the quicker they start moving towards fixing it, the better.
Okay, thank you. And yes, and I did, I just needed that clarification that you're actually okay with the 2023, '23 budget revenues. And, and yes, and I absolutely agree that the easier the state can make it on all of us, the better. And I know I was always supporting forward funding just so that we wouldn't have to have these drastic conversations and scare everybody every year. But I, I don't know how that gets fixed or if there's any bill out there right now where legislature to do that. But, but the good news is, right? The price of oil is up. So anyway, we can all be hopeful. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Next is Mr. Dunbar and then Ms. Lessens.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. So Mr. Donley mentioned something that I was going to speak about and I'd like to elaborate on it. When I was a law student in Connecticut, there was a clinic, a group of, of students, I'm sorry, yes, students and professors that worked with high school students to sue the state government. And they won significant, significantly more funding for education. And I think, Mr. Donley, everyone who's mentioned this is right. I, I don't think that we, I don't think there is the political will in the legislature to do what needs to be done in terms of equity for our kids. And if it's an objective standard, I would argue it, it violates the statute and it probably violates the state constitution too. And if we're looking at a fiscal cliff in fiscal year 2024, litigation should start this year. And so I guess my question is, first of all, I don't recall. Do you have a, a, a full-time, that you, you, you employ a law firm? You don't have a, a school district attorney I can speak to right now. But there's someone that could speak to that. The question I have is, would it be the school district that has standing or the students who have standing? Or both? And I, I think we should start seriously exploring that. You're talking about potentially tens of millions of dollars that I do not believe the legislature has the political will to bring to our kids. And so I think the time has come for litigation or at least exploring litigation seriously with our attorneys. Because I, we've been talking about this since I got on the, on the body too. I mean, it's been, from the moment I was elected, this has been an issue and there's been no movement at all.
I'd say all of the above has interest because there are people of Anchorage and students of Anchorage who see that they are inequitably treated according to their own formula. If they look at the CPIU, the evidence is there. And that's why Mr. Donley has been requesting to go and have ICER do a study. We even said we'd pay for it, remember? But they won't because they're supposed to be independent, have the people who might benefit from it to pay for it. So then we went and said, the state, you should ask for it. You should pay for it. But even maybe filing the lawsuit might have change happen much quicker.
I would suspect it also might look more like a class action with AASB, potentially AML. I don't know that it would be one singular group. But Dave's a lawyer.
AASB doesn't have an interest in this because too many of the people they represent would lose.
I, I would be, it's interesting. I'm not sure what our role is in this. Hopefully you have enough money to, I was just setting aside however many tens of thousands of dollars it is for your of council attorneys to say, really explore this and let's consider filing a suit. And I, just speaking for myself, I think the assembly would support you. Hopefully the administration would support you. This is a clear equity issue for Anchorage. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Next is Ms. Lessens and then Mr. Constant. Ms. Lessens?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dunbar, for that comment. That was certainly something that came up when Member Wilson, Member Higgins and I went to Juno and we spoke with legislators about adequate funding. And ASD did do the Pygus-oddin study a number of years ago, which, which details what adequate funding would entail. And there is a note in that study that said at that point in time, around 2016, we were staffing, ASD was staffing its schools at about 70% of what was considered adequate. And that's now a few years behind us. So I think that there is supporting detail. There's, there's evidence that could help build a case. So I thank you for that. I also wanted to make a couple of notes that this afternoon, there would be an opportunity for anybody in this room to testify with respect to the operating budget. It's at 1:30 about how $13 million might benefit ASD. So anybody can call in to our legislatures, our legislators. And I also wanted to draw these bodies, the attention of these bodies to an excellent summary that Mr. Anderson made for our most recent finance meeting, which shows how different legislative actions might influence ASD's bottom line, whether it's House Bill 259, 272, 273. There's some really good sort of a mapping out of what the next few years might look like under current law and with those changes. So maybe we could follow up and send that just one-page document to members of the assembly.
Thank you, Ms. Lessens. Mr. Constant?
Thank you. I'm back on the topic of potential litigation. I think that we should set up a process by which the two bodies have a conversation and begin a process to investigate the path. I think the assembly could in fact draft and move a resolution that, that, that speaks to the inequity and calls on the table the question at least, maybe not the conclusion, but the question. And so we don't want to act without being really thoughtful because, you know, these are sensitive matters. But there are at least preliminary steps we could take.
At the end of this presentation, Jim had spelled out the reason why, you know, the question that you had asked last time was, why do taxes keep going up? And it all really is based on this same thing. And so I would propose that while we utilize the funds, we, we don't generate funds other than babies, right, in classrooms? We don't make them. Well, you know, unless you have kids. But, but the, the state pays and the municipality pays. And I would say that you have a higher standing due to the base student allocation and the minimal requirement. Do, it's all based off of how much the, the, the local contribution metric. And if the state is paying more because of that, you, we, are paying less. And so I would say the stronger, although we want it for the educational reasons, the stronger is our taxpayers saying, wait a minute. We're treated unfairly in this formula because it's based off the assessed value and Jim can explain it. But I would say the assembly has a bigger stake than the school district because we don't make the money.
And I think I agree with that assessment. And so I think internally, still, we should be coordinated. But it's a good conversation for leadership in the body to have, maybe the rules committee.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. I agree. I was also going to suggest that the body might contemplate bringing forward a resolution. Thank you. So I don't see anyone else in the queue at this time. So if you'd like to continue?
Okay, only 96 more slides. So this should go quick. I'll do a real quick overview of the general fund. If you look at what we circled, you will see that local property taxes. And then if you look under state revenue, are both less next year than they were this year. So we'll have about $16 million less in total revenue. That's a result of projected enrollment. And it's also, a big part of it was a hold harmless provision that kicked in when COVID first kicked off. And that, that next year we lost 4,500 students. The hold harmless provision let us keep on paper 75% of them the first year, 50% the second year. This is the third year that we're in now at 25%. And then the hold harmless goes away. So that's why you see, now this is the, this is, right. Next is 25. Next year is 25, but it's a big drop in hold harmless. And that's really what leads to this reduced revenue. And that's all formulaic. And we'll get to the foundation formula again in a little bit. And on the next slide, you'll see the four buckets that, that we initially drew out for how we were going to spend Esser III money and Esser, remaining Esser II money in fiscal years '23 and '24. But there's a much more detailed laydown as the second part of this. So barring any questions, if we can hold those probably till it's more detailed. If that's all right? Next slide. People transportation has been flat. We can actually say that has been flat funded since 2016 or fiscal year 16. So next year, we're going on seven years of the same price per student to be able to support busing. And, and busing's somewhat difficult to explain. If you have less students, why, why does busing still go up? Well, it has inflationary costs. Everything from the buses, the fuel, the people. But, but really the difference is if you take 10 people out of Eagle River, doesn't change a single bus route. All of the bus routes still continue even if there's 10 less students in an area because you don't have entire communities just get up, pack out and leave Alaska at once. It's spread all over the city. So our busing costs, we don't ever get to take advantage of. Having less students doesn't mean less buses. What it does mean though is less revenue from the state at $481 per student. So I hope that's clear. And moving on to student nutrition. This year, student nutrition will finish not in a deficit, but in the black, mostly due to lack of personnel early in the year and federal funding that supported meals at a higher rate throughout this school year. But we don't anticipate any issues for student nutrition. If you look at the next chart, this chart lays out our general fund expenditures by state function. These are the reporting functions that we have to use in our chart of accounts when we, we report back to the states. This is the first time that I, I actually tried to show the federal relief funds added to each of those state functions. And you will see very quickly that we did put the vast majority of the Esser funds in our budget for next year in instruction. But it really was for ease of, of building a budget and pulling it off. Because if we didn't have the Esser money, it doesn't mean that our cut would be just in the instruction functions. It would have been all across the district. So I hope that isn't misunderstood as, those are just teachers. It, it really was for convenience of a, of an $800 million budget, putting a chunk there, knowing that if we didn't have it, there would have been some very, very difficult conversations around the community in many, many different areas. And we're fortunate we didn't have to have those this year. If you look at the bottom, you will see by percentage of where we put our money. Our priority is education. By and large, our money goes towards people. We, we do have a lot of inflationary costs. You know, just in the last five years, liability insurance has gone up 99.7%. Property insurance has gone up 42% since the earthquake hit. I mean, we do have a lot of different things that keep going up, but we are fortunate that we can still put the majority of our funding towards people.
And this next. And this next graph is mine, and it's just really back to Member Austin Quinn-Davison's question about the reductions. Our PTR has not changed, we've left it alone, we're protecting the classrooms. It does share though, how much of the ESER funds, once again, went into this category, over 56 million, just for teachers, and of course, instruction includes other things as well. The enrollment-based changes that were due to lower enrollment are those cuts. So while every elementary school showed, you know, two or three, overall, there were staff reductions, 18 at middle school, 46 and a half at elementary, and three at high schools due to enrollment. Now, we still do have whole bag teachers that some are added in, depending on just operationally what we needed to do, but those were the specific ones, just for your information, to kind of put it together. Just the ending is just a recap at the beginning, that what we did and what the Board approved in their budget was meeting those preliminary priorities. But Jim's going to take a deeper dive here to answer some questions that we received from the Assembly.
So the next two slides really was Member Perez Verdia's question, and it was, it was a good question. We'd never, Andy and I had never sat down and actually tried to find an easy way to understood it because we could see it, but he was right, it's very difficult to explain, why do we have less students, but my taxes are going up? So, that's what these next two charts are about, and I'm actually appreciative he asked the question, because it gave us a chance to sit down and figure this out where it's easy to understand. The Alaska Foundation Formula, not easy to understand for everybody, but you'll see at the very left, that average daily membership of 41,325, that's the number that we get every October, and that's the enrollment, and that's what starts the whole formula. And we talked through the district cost factor and potential litigation or whatever happens. And then you move all the way to, at the very end, after it's been multiplied a number of times, to an adjusted average daily membership. That, you take that number times $5,930, the base student allocation, that gives you the basic need. The next step is what Dr. Bishop was referring to, this is where the community starts picking up a heavier load. So if you look at just the top half of it, so the next step in the formula is purely dependent on property values, has nothing to do with enrollment up or down. If we had 5,000 less students, the required local contribution would still go up if property values go up in Anchorage. Either way, it's fixed purely on property values. You do have the total allowable contribution, which comes later, but if you look at the graph below that, you'll see the MOA property value, I'm sorry, oh, color blue, I hope it's blue. I have a black and white, I didn't know, I didn't know what everyone has, but in the blue box, you'll see the MOA property values from 17 to 23, went up eight, almost 9%. So the required local contribution went up 9%, having nothing to do with the number of students in the district. The max additional contribution, you can see it actually went down because it's more tied to other factors. So, when we talk about state funding education, the required local contribution, if the state provided more, would not change, wouldn't go up, wouldn't go down, depending on property values. So I thought that was an easy way for me to understand it. I hope it's easy, I hope it's easy to understand, but that's, it's a step in the formula, and that's really where our taxpayers, it's purely property value. Then I put underneath just a quick summary of the last three years of state bond debt reimbursement. So the governor vetoed 50%, or I think it was 50% the first year, 100% the second year. This current fiscal year, this past one, was 63%. So really, Anchorage shouldered almost $75 million of what was formerly known as state bond debt reimbursement over a three-year period. So, when the governor vetoed, did those vetoes, it never was really reducing the cost, it was just reducing the state's share, and it shifted the cost burden over to Anchorage taxpayers. So, you have increasing property values that have continued to increase every year, and you have three straight years in a row of vetoing state bond debt reimbursement. Those two factors are why someone looks at their tax slip and they wonder, how could we have Dr. Bishop saying there's 1,500 less students? Why is my taxes not going down for those 1,500 required local and bond debt veto?
And on the prior discussion about the lawsuit, the max additional taxes, that's where we would save money. That's where the additional, so the required one would increase as well, but then the other, to meet the max, would reduce. That's where the money would, savings would be.
Thank you. Can you give us by chance, off the top of your head, an order of magnitude sense of what the difference would be in this budget if we had won in the court case today?
I wouldn't want to do that off the top of my head, but we could send that out in the next couple of days.
It would be great to have a sense of the scale of the problem, and then we can multiply it over years, maybe have an analysis for the last five years, and then that gets us to the point where we can understand the order of magnitude of numbers we're talking about.
It'd only take five minutes, it's just one number that changes, it goes from 1 to 1.07, so we can run that after this meeting and send it out.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Mr. Donnelly?
Jim, I know you're focused on ASD budget, but do we have any documents that show what percentage the ASD budget is of the total municipal budget, and how it's been either growing or reducing over the past five years or so?
Without the, without the municipalities CFO, I honestly, I did not memorize their budget. I don't know.
And I didn't expect you to, I was just wondering if there was any coordination at all that showed that, because I get asked that question a lot by people.
Remember, Donnelly, could you repeat the question? I only heard the last part.
The question was, how does the ASD budget relate to the total municipal budget? And how has that factor evolved over the last five years?
As a simple initial answer, there's a max cap, and we've been close to that cap or at it, but the cap hasn't increased significantly, but I don't know about the percent or if the municipalities, I think it's probably pretty close to flat, would be my guess.
Madam Chair, that's something I think a lot of people, I get asked that question all the time. I'd really like to have our, maybe our municipal and our school district finance heads get together and give us, you know, an answer to that question.
May I add to that? When the tax notices go out, don't they show the pie chart of that? Yeah, so it, somebody has it, and you just have to look at it. It's done every year, and when you get that in the mail, I remember seeing it myself, I just, you know, we'll make a note.
I just want to point out that when the governor vetoes bond debt, that's outside the cap, right? So, a percentage for operational funding for the district is, is, the total tax starts including all of those additional 20, 30, 40 million dollars that the state shifted as well.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly, and I know I am documenting follow-up items, and I believe President Bellamy is doing that as well. Do members have any other questions on the budget? Mr. Constant?
On the issue of the tax statement, just, we should be cautious because everybody, depending on your address, has a slightly different set of numbers there, and so, it probably would take a little bit of financial acumen to generate a number that generalizes across the municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. I don't see any other members in the queue, so I believe we can move on to item D2, under financial planning, COVID relief funds. This item was put on the agenda by both the Assembly and the Board and District. And President Bellamy, would you like to start?
Do we, I don't think, do we have, okay, yes, it's black and white, I think, it's not color, in color. Yes, Dr. Bishop?
Um.
You should have this, you should have a copy of.
Okay.
I'll defer to Mr. Anderson's team, and.
It's a copy of the, hopefully you have a copy of the stimulus funds sheets that we have on here. We'll go through each package and kind of what was included and when we got the money. Like, the first one we got CARES Act money, that's ESER I, we got that about March, April of 2020, shortly after the pandemic really kind of kicked off. The money we spent on that was predominantly, we put in classroom teachers, we had talked to the city and everyone expressed interest about adding back later. Our original plan was to remove some of our health teachers, about 30 FTE, I believe. And once we got these funding back, we did add those positions back into our budgets, as well as focused heavily on IT one-to-one support because we are going into a virtual learning mode, providing the equipment and support for those devices to our students. And also, the online course development was a pretty big chunk of this, the first round of stimulus money, just to have those learning platforms ready for our students. And then PPE was one of the other larger chunks of funding that we did, with that hand sanitizer, masks and dividers predominantly to get kids back in school. So that first package is about $11.5 million. We expect to spend out the remainder of that this year, once, most of it's been purchased already, with the exception of a few months of those classroom teachers that we're still going to pay out for the remainder. But when we look at these sheets, all of them are going to have a remaining balance of zero, and that's just to show that every, all the money that we have in these grants have been allocated out already to different priorities. So, to that end, it may not have already been spent, but there's plans to spend it. Is there any questions on the first round of stimulus? Okay, the second round of stimulus we received in about December of 2020, it was about $50 million in total. That focused heavily on classroom teachers, ongoing one-to-one support and equipment for our student-to-device ratio, and then we put in money for summer school to help, really help the students who had gotten behind, help those kids get caught back up. If anyone wants to speak to the actual data on that, those programs were really successful, kids showed a lot of improvement in those, and really successful, we want to keep those programs going for this coming summer as well. We did focus again on PPE and virtual instruction to get those programs in place for the students who either had physical limitations or health limitations coming back to school, or just uncomfortable doing, allowing that option for kids to learn remotely once school did get back in person. You'll see charter schools and indirect cost on all of these, these are kind of formulaic things. We provided funds to our charter schools for how they want to spend it, just based on their adjusted ADM as a proportionate share of the total grant amount. But those are the bigger things, and we did identify some funding remaining from classroom teachers. We had originally had around closer to $30 million allocated, we didn't, we don't plan on spending all of that money, some of it is we didn't hire the, all the positions that we had allocated, we allocated about 255 positions, we only hired 230 of those, so we had savings on the number of positions we hired, and then the actual employees that we pushed over to the grant, there was a price difference on the per FTE cost. So that was a little bit lower, lower actual teachers, and then some of them waived health insurance, so we didn't pay into that. So we did have some savings in that classroom teacher line, which generated this about $5 million line on the mental health that was approved by the school board through an amendment of the budget last Tuesday. So those are the big areas that we spent on the ESER II, we expect most of that to be spent out this year with the remaining mental health and charter school funding to be spent down next year. So any questions on the ESER II package?
Mr. Rivera?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to clarify on that, on that $5 million for mental health, is that going towards the Board goal of the mental health in elementary schools, or is that going towards something else?
Actually, it is a comprehensive plan, and so, it is to primarily meet that, but also build capacity with partners in our community, understanding that ESER, especially that, is going to end, and we don't want to build up. So we are working with internally as well as externally of how to keep this going into the future, and part of that would then be, as we know, the ability to bill Medicaid. And so we want to work with partners in that. But we can do actually a special presentation of our monitoring report that we provided the Board, an update of where we are and what we want to do. So, yes and yes, it's for that, but more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Okay.
Actually, one moment, sorry, Mr. Donnelly?
I hate to talk so much, but I wanted to go through a little exercise to just identify the significant and the magnitude of the projected $40 million gap, not this coming fiscal year, but the next one. And I was just rounding up to the nearest million. I mean, if we, if we cut sixth grade band and orchestra, if we did away with the middle school model, if we eliminated programs like tonight, if we took a 10% administrative non-classroom cut, I get about $10 million or so in savings. And Jim, you're going to know this better than me, a lot better. What would we still need to increase the district-wide pupil teacher ratio by, to fill in that $40 million?
Well, I was somewhat vague when I said very difficult conversations with the community because you would have to look at everything from, you know, school closures to programs. And when you start looking at programs and everything on the table, you know, we haven't started those conversations at this time. Frankly, we would, for very good reasons, wait until after we see a House Bill 259, which would be a very effective funding mechanism for education for the state, 272 and 273. The Senate version of one-time funding, that probably would have no impact on our looking out at the future, but 272, 273 and 259, depending on how those play out this year, it will, anytime you do worst case based off the fact that nothing changes, you really don't want to have a conversation until you're confident that nothing's going to change, and that's.
I'm just trying to get a sense of the magnitude of the problem. So, district-wide PDA pupil teacher ratio increased by one, district-wide?
It's about $7 million.
Okay.
And actually, you could use what we spent ESER II on, 250 teachers was about how much money? So to make up your other 30 million, how much was ESER II towards teachers?
We'd originally allocated about 29 plus million, and we plan on spending about 24 for the 230.
And that was, so, 230, 29 million is about 250 some odd teachers, that gives you.
About four.
And not that, to Jim's point, it's going to be teachers.
About a four.
Yeah.
So that's, that's how dramatic it is. I mean, that would be, kindergartens would go from 21 to 25, if you spread it across equally for every grade, which we probably wouldn't do, we'd really want to try to preserve.
And only if PTR was the only thing you looked at, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But yes, as an example, yes.
That's just huge.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Ms. Lessons?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Donnelly, that was an excellent question. When I was down in Juneau with the other school board members and our students, we got legislators' attention by sharing that in FY '23, we are keeping, maintaining the status quo PTR, which maybe isn't what we should be doing given the profound learning gaps that we need to address, but we're maintaining that status quo with $56.5 million, that is, we would have a 10, we would increase the PTR by 10. That is what I believe was shared with the Board previously. So it's not that we would necessarily do it, but that's what those federal funds are being used to prevent right now, is a PTR increment. but that's what those federal funds are being used to prevent right now is a PTR increase of 10. So rather than 21 for kindergarten, 31. Rather than 30.25 for our high schoolers, 40. So those are some big numbers and it caught our legislators' attention.
And, I'm sorry. President Bellamy?
Yeah, and those are conversations that this community will have to have. And I don't want people getting all freaked out as we move forward. So, but those are conversations, those are the tough conversations. And so I just want to make sure that we're just projecting that is not the case. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bellamy. Any other questions?
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the ESER 2 did represent an increase of about four FTE or four PTR on the classroom teachers. When we went to SER 3, as Ms. Lessen stated, it is about 10 of, or PTR that we increased. On the next slide. So the top line, the classroom teachers, that represents about an increase of a 10 PTR. Not that we would do that, but for efficiency's sake, you know, I became the grant manager of this on top of my day job. So I wanted to manage this as, get this money spent out as efficiently as possible. And by shifting just FTE over into this grant and spending it out throughout the course of the year, that's quite a bit more efficient to manage than having a whole lot of different things by each schools. So really, it was purely an efficiency thing to do that. But we did, we spent a little over 56 million or plan to spend that much next year on classroom teachers, just to support PTR. Ongoing our one-to-one support and the equipment that we're due to keep our student-to-device ratio the same. That's going to continue. Our summer school programs are planning to continue to the extent we have funds available. That kind of tapers off on FY '24. Virtual instruction continues, as does. The next items are really kind of catch-up learning type things and data assessments that are going to inform the way we instruct. The reading intervention, that's a million and a half now or for 22 and then 1.7 for 23 and 24. That's really after-school tutoring type programs and putting those direct interventions with those schools, with those students. And then we have reading teacher experts that are going to be just really targeted in-school approaches for the highest need students. And there's some other smaller things. And then the other, the bigger ones are the digital, direct digital control for our air handling systems. We have, I believe, 24 schools that are on these old pneumatic systems that are, are more manually controlled and harder to adjust to, to really optimize that airflow to keep that, to keep moving air through the building. So we're going to have a digital control where you can do it all from a centralized location to see how much air is moving through and control those, oh, the dampers that kind of open and close and allow that to happen. And that's tied into the next item, that DZGO Bob airflow. So that's, that's the software that kind of optimizes these PDC air handling. But with that, you know, it's the same thing. We did allocate this money to charter schools and allow to spend them to spend it the way they intend for their program. Largely, they're spending it similar to the way the district is on PPE. They're buying computers, they're putting staff in there to maintain their PTR. And they're also, some of them are doing summer schools as well. But that's about, that's the spending plan that we have for ESER 3, if there's any questions on that.
Thank you. Mr. Weddleton and then Ms. Lessen?
I think so, looking at this, so with the SER 1 and 2, you use about 25 million for classroom teachers. But then in the SER 3, it's 56. So why that big jump?
Part of it is the hold harmless went from 75 to 50 to 25. So losing that much state and local revenue. You know, what we really tried to do was replace that gap that was caused by lower revenue.
And then the inflation on top of that is.
Right.
Thank you.
But I would urge though, that the one takeaway should not be, we're going to cut 500 teachers. Because that, that absolutely is not the way we would look at, at doing something for an organization this large. So really hope that's not the one bullet that, that gets taken out of the room.
Thank you. Thank you. Any follow-up, Mr. Weddleton? Ms. Lessen?
Yeah, I just wanted to share for our Assembly members, what I thought was a great answer from Dr. Bishop at our last goal monitoring session. And I had asked, we were talking about math and math proficiency is one of our goals. And she pointed out that the allocation of resources towards the reading interventionists will actually also help us attain our math proficiency because it'll allow our instructional coaches to then focus on other areas of interest. So even though we don't see math per se addressed in this allocation of SRO fund, the focus on reading will allow other resources to address the other ongoing goals. So I appreciated that clarification from, from last time.
Thank you, Ms. Lessen. Mr. Weddleton?
Where, where's the SROs in this? Did you fund them out of this?
We did fund the SROs. I think it's page 142 of the budget. It's in general fund? Yes, it's page 142 in the budget book. It's, I can, I can send you an email if you wanted. It's just, no, no, no. I don't think that would be an allowable use.
Thank you, Mr. Weddleton. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I apologize, the Zoom kept sort of cutting in and out. So if you addressed this already and I missed it, I apologize. But because Mr. Weddleton brought up the SROs, I would like to speak about that a little bit now. That's appropriate. So the Assembly funded a significant portion of the SROs for this year's budget. We overrode the mayor's veto when he vetoed those funds. Why did you feel that you had to shift a significant amount of those costs into your budget?
Why?
Right, I mean, we, we funded it, then we, then we overrode the mayor's veto. I think it's an indication that there's strong support on the appropriating body of municipality to support the SROs and not lay off police officers.
And I can speak to that. It's more of a programmatic. Very strongly from every part of our organization, from our student resolution to the teacher union resolution, to principal resolution, all supported the safety aspect and mental health that is needed. It, it isn't an either or in schools, it's a both. And I want to be very clear that when you see crime in our neighborhoods, people who may get involved in those things have children and sometimes the children have access. There isn't a month gone by this year that I haven't had a gun in a school. I don't want my teachers, I don't want my counselors, I don't want my mental health people addressing guns. The threats that occur at night, you know, on social media, that's how we pick up most of these. The way that that goes down is not, I mean, we had one recently. The parent called 911. 911 immediately went to the officer, but then the officer called the SRO. We were able to get the SRO to say, did you secure? Did you go? Have you looked into, can we have school tomorrow? Can I let people know? Calm, it's okay to come to school, you're safe. And so that's here too. That, that is mental and physical. So we've tied them together. And given just the anxiety and the stressors that the COVID has caused in people, I mean, you guys have seen it at your meetings, I've seen it at ours. The behavior is like kind of out there. So we chose that we would, this is valuable enough for us to move into the next year to have people's minds kind of settled, that we, we understand the mental health is also safety and security health. Those are tied together. And we just didn't want to chance that your body might not believe the same thing as us. That I did not want to let the people of Anchorage School District down to say, okay, now we didn't fund it, perhaps you guys don't override an additional after July 1. We just, it wasn't a risk that I wanted to take, given the financial situation we are in this year with, with funds. I mean, that, it's truly a programmatic reason. We share how to best meet the needs of, carry out the Board's goals, carry out our community's values. You all decide the money and do the money. And that's why I shared before, heck yeah, go sue them. And I think the municipality has a bigger say than I do because it is your money, it is your tax money. So we provide the program, we provide the vision, the expertise. That's what we're hired to do. How it's paid for, we just want to be crystal clear of the value. And, and that is why. And I know it's controversial, but given moving on to a new year, leaving it to chance wasn't the risk I wanted to take. And that, and that's all.
Can I forward a point out? Our budget starts 1 July where the Assembly decision wouldn't have, there was no funding source on 1 July that we were aware of.
Go ahead, Mr. Dunbar?
Yeah, I just, I feel like the administration put this school board, and I want to speak on their behalf, in an impossible situation. The Assembly said clearly, we would fund this thing. We, they are Anchorage Police Officers and the Anchorage Police Department. We all support them and the work they do. But we have residents in your schools, they're still residents and they deserve police protection and the mentorship and everything else that SROs deserve. But by sort of presenting the budget in the way you did to the school board, it seemed like you put them in a situation where they, they had to be the bad guys and pull it out of there. And you gave the, and, and what actually I believe should have happened is, as has happened since, what, 2013? You should have said that the, the line item will come from the municipality, as it has and as we would and as we were eager to fund. So I, I, again, it's not about the merits of the program because I think, you know, we all agree on those or, I mean, there are some varying opinions, but certainly the majority of the Assembly and I think the administration, the school, the, the school district's administration strongly supports the SROs. But it's one of our opportunities to help fund the school district. Or I shouldn't say fund the school district, but it's a cost that we rightly bear. And I think we should have continued to bear it. So that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, may I respond? So I highly respect that and, and thank you. And if you do make changes, we would be happy to save that $3.2 million because you see the cliff we're going to have. And that would be my recommendation to the Board. Put that in savings because the next year is going to hit us, tank us. I want you to know that I did not hear what you heard. And maybe that's just because I'm not in the political realm. Specifically at the meeting that we had, and, and Mr. Rivera, you spoke up and said, I, I think you made a, a comment that we're done hearing about it, we support it, like move on. And I heard loud and clear that that wasn't unanimous. And so again, the cha, and, and in our Board, we have to be quite honest, there was controversy. There was, I support them, but I don't want to pay for them kind of things. I mean, so I'm, and my job isn't to, okay, navigate, navigate, who's going to do what, do what. I have to reassure the families, the employees. I couldn't believe the employees, the support and the students that like, hey, chill out, it's going to be okay. We're going to move on. But we would gladly, and I know the school board, would gladly receive those operational funds back in our operations. And my recommendation would be to save them, to, to put them for the next year. And I regret that the Board felt trapped. But I don't know how else I could have acknowledged that community, you know, when something is a priority for you. And I've been in meetings where places where school resource officers went away and guess what, school districts are painful and now they're setting up their own police departments, which is like, I don't want to get in that lane. So I just wanted to, to share, thank you for that support. But that communication was not loud and clear to me.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And we have a number of folks in the queue. First, President Bellamy, then Ms. Allard, then Mr. Constance, then Ms. Quinn Davidson, and then Mr. Rivera, and then Mr. Holloman. Or we can just go around the table.
I'll try to be brief.
President Bellamy?
Thank you. And, and I'd like to thank Assemblyman Dunbar for, for his comments and, and the Assembly overall for your, for your support. I did not feel trapped, I felt conflicted, to be quite honest. I believe our job is to educate kids and I think public safety should be handled by the muni. At the same time, I have, I, I also listen to our staff, I listen to families. And we have the opportunity right now. The selling point for me is the opportunity that we are taking to redefine wellness in our district. What is the, you know, what are the health and safety needs of our students? Which includes their physical, mental. And so we, we have that opportunity to really redesign the whole, how, how we are responding to. And I think SROs are part of that. So it's not a standalone kind of thing. And my final comment would be, I, my understanding was that the funding that we got from the, from the municipality would end, I mean, we're on a different kind, a different year, but it would end at a certain, it would end like June 30th or, yeah, end June 30th. And so for the funding to pick up the rest of it and really not knowing what would happen, I kind of thought, I mean, I feel that we have your support, the Assembly's support. But I also know that it, it's not a given. I mean, it's not, it wasn't. I don't know that I want to say I can't count on it, but in building this budget, I wasn't really comfortable counting on it. So, but I did not feel, I really didn't feel trapped. I was really conflicted. Thanks.
Thank you, President Bellamy. Next is Ms. Allard, and then I'll just go through the list I have if anyone else wants. And then Mr. Constance, then Ms. Quinn Davidson, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Holloman, Ms. Zalatell, and then Mr. Jacobs. Ms. Allard?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. We really do, I think, all agree how important, I don't want to speak for everybody, so I'll just speak for my district and perspective, how important the school resource officers are. Redirecting how they are paid for is a completely, is a conversation that needed to come forward. The reason I say that is because when you have police officers being paid for by the muni, but 75% of the time, those resource officers are working for the school district to provide protection for our children, parents and visitors, teachers, administration alike. It's super important that that ownership of how that funding is to take place comes from the ASD school district. To tax property owners or taxpayers under the municipality is actually almost double jeopardy. And why I say that is because we shouldn't ask taxpayers pay for things the school district needs to pay for out of their budget because that's being double taxed. We're already paying for it and we shouldn't have to pay for it twice. I, I strongly believe that the school district stepping up and the Board signing off saying, okay, we'll budget for it, is taking responsibility for something that the taxpayer says they need to take responsibility for. And I appreciate that. And it's absolutely supported the way that the, the funding came out. Myself, and I know Ms. Kennedy as well and others in the community. So as long as I'm on the Assembly and a member of the community, I will always support that to be put in the budget of the ASD. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. Next is Mr. Constance.
Thank you. I never had an arithmetic class that taught me a singular expense could be double taxation, but that's interesting math. The issue I see is that these are APD expenses. These are not ASD expenses. These are not ASD expenses. And we're shifting, we're shifting the cost of our municipal expenses onto the school district. And to me, that's a crime. And especially as we come to that cliff that we're talking about in the next couple of years where the school district finds itself in a real shortfall of dollars. These dollars will come directly out of classroom time and education for students. And that is not how this program is supposed to work. And I, I don't know how an assembly could more clearly telegraph to an administration of a school district or an elected body of a school district that we are fully in support than we first voted for it, then it was removed, then we moved it back in and then it was vetoed and then we overrode the veto. I don't know how we could be more clear that we support the municipality paying for its responsibilities. But I will say it again here, we are 100% there, except there were two no votes in that process. And those records are crystal clear for anyone who wishes to go back and see where the support for your program lies. Now, of course, your argument that you can't tell after July 1 until our budget is set for the next year, that's a fair argument and I recognize and understand why you would take that move to ensure that the program is contiguous and doesn't go away for a failure of administrative processes on the side of the municipality. But ultimately, any argument that this program was going away by an action of your school district's board or the assembly is just not true. There's no basis in reality for that. And I don't think it's controversial that, that this community supports these programs. And so I wanted to say that really loud and clear here. I understand now why, I didn't understand before. I understand now why and because any given Tuesday, anything could happen. And that's a risk you can't really take. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Bishop. So I'll make a final request. The Anchorage School Board would appreciate an amendment to your next quarter funding SROs, at least through the school. And my recommendation to the board, but yet I'll be moving on, would be to keep those funds so that we can keep our teachers as we move into the future. But I, the differences of the years is quite a mathematical issue there.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Thank you, Mr. Constance. Ms. Quinn Davidson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think most of what I wanted to say has been said, which is that we support the SROs and we support everyone being safe in our community and not just adults. And I believe that it should be funded by the municipality. So I appreciate what Mr. Dunbar said, what Mr. Constance said. I mean, the facts are that the mayor created doubt when he took it out of the budget and made the administration of the school district, I'm sure, and the school board fear that their schools might not be as safe because he cut police officers out of your schools. And I'm sorry he did that. Our response was to put it back in, he vetoed it. Our response was to override him and to show, except for Ms. Kennedy and Ms. Allard, who voted against adding it back. So those are the facts and I just want that to be really clear because there's a lot of revisionist history going on here when the mayor and others show up and say, we support school resource officers. Show me your values and put it in your budget and tell the truth about what's in your budget and what you vetoed. And I'm just getting a little tired of this, these, this fake information floating around. The facts are that nine of us supported SROs in schools. And Ms. Allard and Ms. Kennedy did not and the mayor did not. So anyway, we have your back, we support SROs in schools. We support funding them, we support keeping kids safe. And I guess I would just say to you, Deana, that you and I have been working together for a while. And if you guys, to the board too, if you don't know where we are, ask us. And, you know, we all can't communicate offline together for, you know, Open Meetings Act purposes, but I would love to have a conversation with you and I, anyway, just to set the record straight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn Davidson. Mr. Rivera?
I can't say how deeply disappointed I am that we went down this path based off of misinterpretation and an overbroad characterization of what some assembly members said about this issue. And frankly, the pure politicization of this issue from some parts of our community. Just like others have stated, there were nine assembly members that supported keeping SROs in the budget. I was one of them. So to point me out and say that some comments that I said means I don't support SROs is a fabrication beyond imagination. So it's really disappointing. Regardless of how I feel about SROs, the school district shouldn't bear the cost, period. In that last discussion we had at a previous joint meeting, we talked about first quarter budget revisions being a place where we could fill that gap because we only funded it to a certain extent. And then myself and, and at least one other assembly member made comments about what can we do to investigate how SROs can evolve in our community? And I think that is a conversation that we should continue to have. I talk with community members and community leaders who want to continue having that discussion in our community. So let the record be very clear. I supported funding SROs and any indication otherwise is just false. Thank you.
May I respond? Dr. Bishop?
Thank you. This seems like a beating on me and I just want to let you know that the political stuff that's going on here between you, I know you need to get it on record, but you need to go back and listen to your other conversations when we brought people in here to talk about SROs. Our job is to present to you the values that we picked up from people. That's what we did. How you want to play this with your mayor, with your school board and with your assembly? You have a strong school district. And thank you, I'm glad you are all getting on record. Let it set the record straight that our community in the school feels that it's a valuable program too. And that was our job because we are not politicians. I'm not an elected person. I did hear you say and counter what Mr. Dunbar mentioned last time. That's what made me worried. That's why I put it in because I knew there wasn't a strong support. I mean, it wasn't something I could count on. And I wasn't going to put the safety of staff and students at risk. I get it, go on record. But I feel as though I, I'm listening to conversations too.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I just want to call attention to the time, it's 11:40. But I also appreciate our opportunity to talk this through and I think it's really important, though also recognize there are some difficult aspects to it. So I'll go next.
Madam Chair, I have to leave, so I just want to say thank you to everybody for this conversation. And Ms. Bishop, I definitely was not pointing any of my comments at you. It was at the process and just to know that I have a lot of respect for you. And this is a difficult topic for the community. And everybody, thank you for being willing to take this on because these are the conversations that make districts better.
Thank you, Mr. Constance. So I'll go next to Mr. Holloman, then Ms. Zalatell, Mr. Jacobs and then Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Holloman?
Thank you. I want to say in regard to Assemblyperson Allard's comments, this is a conversation we had less than 10 years ago when the school district bore the SRO cost for some time and the assembly picked it back up. And I absolutely feel the support of this assembly for ASD in general and SROs in particular. And I deeply appreciate it. We also live under the fact that, that the assembly changes a little every year and the school board changes a little every year. And the pressures you're faced with on budget and policy and everything are particularly intense right now. And I share the same feeling of unpickability as the superintendent expressed. I knew it would be the intent of most of you to see these funds stay and be a part of the police department. But it was nervousness that, that made me agree to see it continue in the budget. And mainly because if you do step forward, and I hope you do, and simply explain to the public that it means dollars going to instruction. Every dollar you put into the APD to cover SROs means a dollar of money in ASD's budget that will go to instruction. It'll happen after your budget becomes final. And I apologize for not knowing exactly when that will happen, but shortly. I know that it's much easier to take funds that have become available and fill holes in our classrooms than it is to go in and create holes in our classroom in order to fund something that didn't get funded that we thought it would. And, and so it wasn't a lack of confidence in the assembly by any means, but it was a concern that we could be faced with either losing that program or having to go in and undo programs and FTE that we had anticipated for the fall in order to backfill it. The number 25% was mentioned and I'm guessing that comes out of the argument that during the summer, when we're not in session, SROs do other duties. The reality is they're dispatched by APD all the time. And I realize I'm telling the assembly something they well know. They're police officers first and they're in the community. They're not necessarily standing guard over our schools as some people portray it, but the interaction they have is extremely valuable and it's valuable to the entire community. It's valuable to the, the standing APD has in our community. It allows them to be better police and it also is very meaningful for our schools. So I think that's why there's, there's near universal support for it. I do understand the superintendent's position of we're going to make sure that this program's not in question because it has deep roots and it's not like other SR programs in the country. If, if it were interrupted and then had to be reconstituted, it would be a huge loss, even if it was done almost immediately. We want to keep this program as it's, as it has been functioning for decades, continuous and for certain. And, and that's why we would give up education dollars to make certain of that. And I certainly did not mean to put you folks in an awkward situation, but quite frankly, your situation seemed so awkward, I don't know how you could tell slight changes in it one way or the other. But, but I, I don't fully sense that, so I, it may be something I don't fully appreciate. But I, the, the direct outspoken support that the assembly's had for ASD is much appreciated. It elevates us and, and helps us feel like there is a backstop. But I, I watched the assembly meetings. I haven't been able to go to very many of them, but I watch and it, it feels like very uncertain times. So again, thank you for your support. We did not mean to make it more difficult in any way.
Thank you, Mr. Holloman. Ms. Zalatell, then Mr. Jacobs, then Ms. Kennedy. Ms. Zalatell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanted to provide a few points and basically, you know, I am someone who has raised questions about whether or not the SRO program is optimized to meet student needs or if it could be coupled with other resources such as mental health services. I'm pleased to see in this year's budget, a significant investment in mental health services. That's, that being said, asking for some nuance and program evaluation doesn't mean it's not supported. I think that's an important piece here. You shouldn't expect blind allegiance to a program in order to suggest that we wouldn't, you know, to continue funding. I think that asking if we can add more tools to the toolbox to support student safety and student well-being is very important. And it's an ongoing quality improvement conversation we should absolutely have. We have those conversations about programs within the municipality, even within ASD's, I'm sorry, not ASD, APD's operations. So I think it's an important piece to this discussion. And it is where my conversation has been. And I have been accused of being skeptical about the SROs. I have always said, if we want to support students, let's make sure we're doing it in the best way possible and making sure we balance the interest that we are supporting students and ensuring safety. So I'm disappointed we're here and I'm disappointed I didn't receive a phone call. I didn't receive an email. If there was ever any doubt as to my position, all you have to do is give me a phone call or send me an email. I would expect that from partnership. And so I hope this is a lesson learned for all of us that we, if we have a big issue like this coming up, maybe we schedule a work session. Maybe we dig in a little deeper together as a team to really talk about how to move forward. Because I don't like being in this position now when it was very clear with our votes how the assembly felt about SROs and that we not only found ways to put the funding in, we overrode the vetoes and we made commitments that we would take this up in one Q, which is our na, next natural opportunity to do so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Zalatell. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that this isn't a conversation that either body asked to have. Can we hear me? Okay, very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that this isn't a conversation that either body asked to have, that the cost shift to APD's budget was in the proposed municipal budget that was handed to the assembly last year. I do appreciate the support consistently demonstrated by the assembly. Going forward, I do ask we remember that any reduction to the local contribution for ASD's operating budget will exacerbate the issue that we're facing with the impending fiscal cliff. And so I know the, the board's focus is on education. I appreciate the assembly clearly indicating today that we're going to be allowed to continue to do that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, it's always good to clear the air. So I think this conversation, though it might be difficult for some, is probably a good thing. And I just want to say that I, I appreciate Mr. Holloman's comments. I certainly appreciate everything that Dr. Bishop said. From my perspective, you know, I spent nine years on the Anchorage School Board and if anybody wants to check my voting record in terms of how I voted on SROs, it would be very obvious that I always supported them, especially, especially when the Anchorage School District and the municipality agreed to go 50/50. And we really didn't even have that conversation at all. But I will tell you that a lot of my vote in terms of not agreeing to override the veto came from the fact that I heard those underpinnings from school board members as well. They told me that there was a question about whether or not that was really where the community was pushing them to go. And so I understand them wanting to be responsive in that. But one way that I had of really recognizing that the school district itself was going to support SROs was by their willingness to fund them. So I think that that's what, you know, that my, from my perspective, that was my reason for voting the way that I did. And one thing you'll always know about me, I'll always have a reason, a specific reason for voting the way I did and it had nothing to do with politics. It had nothing to do with the fact that I don't support SROs because like I said, you can look back at my record on the Anchorage School District for nine years and you can see exactly where I stood on that issue. So anyway, you know, again, it's probably good to clear the air. It's a shame that some people have gotten kind of defensive about all of this. I appreciate Ms. Solatell bringing forward her perspective on this. So again, I will absolutely support this program. I've worked closely with SROs before with a couple of specialty programs that they've done in our schools. So I, there is nothing that says that I don't support them as a group, as an effort for how, what they do in our schools and just even the, the education role that they actually play, even as police officers. They literally haven't They literally have an educational purpose as well, and I can talk more about that at another time. But anyway, it just makes sense to me that we have some kind of a shared responsibility in all of this, and that's what I would like to see going forward, is that sharing so that both of us know, all of us know, that we all have skin in the game and there's a role for all of us to play in terms of how we actually support the program. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. And I do have a member who has asked to go into the queue a second time. We have 10 minutes left, and I want to go to folks who haven't had a chance yet to speak. Ms. Wilson, sorry.
I also want to thank the Assembly for their support for our district, for our kids, for our community, and for our SRO program. When we talked about, for me, I can only speak for myself here, when we were talking about SROs and the concern for the possibility of their funding not being continued through the municipality's budget. I mean, in my conversations with staff, with our kids, with our families, and my personal experience being a therapeutic foster parent and working with SROs myself throughout the years, the concern for me was that, you know, regardless of whether or not we have our SROs in our schools, the issues with our kids, the gun safety, the issues are going to be there. The police are going to be responding because they respond to our community, to these high level issues in our community. But how they respond is very different. If you bring a police officer who has not worked with our students, who has not worked in learning how to de-escalate situations, it's a huge difference. I've worked with police officers that don't have that training and the escalation increases. I've worked with our SROs who have had that training and work with our kids who are in crisis, who have dealt with trauma, who have all kinds of issues going on, and they bring all those issues with them to school, and they de-escalate them. So this is not just an ASD issue because those kids, those families that come into our schools, they're our community. They're going to be either, we're either going to work with them progressively to de-escalate those issues and make positive progress, or the situation's going to be escalated and some of those folks are going to end up in our criminal justice system. So for me, the concern about our SROs being worried about continuing their own program, about our district staff, our kids, our families being worried about their increased safety issues in schools, that's why I supported it in the budget because I did not want to see that fall through the cracks. I really hope that the Assembly chooses to put that in your budget so we can put that money towards our kids, towards the academics and the education. But I personally could not let the possibility of that falling through the cracks happen.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Before we continue through the queue, I will go to President Bellamy.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that we extend until 12:15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved to extend by President Bellamy until 12:15, seconded by Mr. Rivera, seeking unanimous consent. Seeing no opposition, we are extended until 12:15. Were there any other members who wanted to get in the queue before I go for a second round? And asking anyone who's in for a second round of comments, to be brief. Mr. Peterson?
All right, double-fisted here. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's just unfortunate that this program has become a political football over the years. You know, when I was first on the Assembly, it was funded through the school district budget. We switched it out to where we had it in our budget, in the municipal budget, and now it seems to be a hybrid, the way it's set up now. But this is an excellent program. It needs to be continued. And it's, you know, the commitment just has to continue to be there from not only the Anchorage Assembly, but from also the school board and from the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I will go to Ms. Allard for a brief second comment.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to, it looks like she stepped out of the room, but I wanted to thank Dina Bishop. For me, this has nothing to do with the politics of the SROs. I support them. They're personal friends of mine. They work at my daughter's school. Bottom line is it's a funding issue. That's all. And I appreciate Mr. Holloman's comments as well, and every board member that had voted for this, and again, overall, the school board administration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. And I don't see anyone else in the queue at this point on this topic, so we'll move on. I'll just thank everyone for their comments and thanks to those of you who pointed out the inherent awkwardness of the political environment and the need to move together and to move forward together with more deliberate communications on some of these issues. So thank you. Our next item, we do not have anything under E, capital improvement needs. We do not have anything under F, comprehensive plan, land use matters. Actually, apologies, let me just go back really quickly to the item we were just on under financial planning, which actually was COVID relief funds, though we got on the topic of SROs. And I understand that the district had requested from us to get some information about how closely ASD was aligned with MOA priorities with COVID-19 relief fund distribution. Was that?
It really was just to see where we even aligned in our efforts. I think all the Assembly knows, the Anchorage Health Department has worked very closely with us for getting some of the city grants to be able to do everything from vaccinations to testing. The state has some other stuff outside of SRO money. It really was, were there other opportunities that the Assembly and/or the city's working on that we're just completely unaware of that we could have aligned with those efforts just because we don't know?
Well, we will put that on the list for a follow-up item, since we, if that's okay, since we're short on time today. Okay, so we are now under G, other matters of mutual concern. The first one is safe school routes, and that is an item put forward by both the municipality, the board, and the district, or it says MOA and ASD, the Assembly and the district and the board. And before I go to President Bellamy, I just wanted to call attention to the resolution that the Assembly had passed, AR number 2019-440, as amended back in 2019, and also the corresponding resolution of support from the school board, ASD memorandum number 081, which was passed January 21, 2020. This item went on the back burner, I'd say, while school was virtual and we talked less about safe walking routes during that time, but it's one that continues to come up. And we all, I know in our Assembly districts, and Mr. Weddleton and I in District Six have ongoing areas of concern, and we all do, as far as some of the routes to those neighborhood schools. And I wanted just to mention two things. If you turn to the second page of the resolution, we had identified on the Assembly side three actions, and one of those was to catalog the current dangerous crossings and develop a plan of action. And I would just suggest to Assembly members that if you could identify those areas of concern in your district and send that information to Rebecca Metcalf in the Assembly Council Department, we can start on our end to put that list together perhaps as an aim that we can, an information memorandum that we can bring before the body. So that's one thing we can do on the Assembly side. And then just, you know, recognizing as our conversations have in the past that these are not just issues concerning municipal roads, but state roads as well, and that we have Mr. Weddleton and Mr. Zalatell on AMATS, who I believe may have some suggestions, you know, for how we might improve participation and feedback to the state on that. So with that, I will go to President Bellamy.
Sure. And this came up last time, probably two meetings ago. So it's a reoccurring issue. And so I do recall when we, back in 2020, I recall when the memo was done to support the resolution, although we're not, the district doesn't have any place on any of the, I guess, the public facilities that do this stuff, right? So we do support a plan, but, and I will go to the superintendent to have any other comments. Or Mr. Roth?
Through the chair. So my understanding was that this was going to be conversational between Assembly and board members. I do have Ms. Heather Philp, who was our Senior Director for Student Transportation, present, really to respond to comments and questions, but the administration has no specific presentation on this topic.
So if there are specific questions, I know, Mr. -- oh.
Thank you, President Bellamy. Mr. Weddleton?
Well, I think as you've all learned, this is one of my trigger topics here. And if I didn't have to leave four minutes ago, I would make that SRO discussion look pretty calm. So, but actually, I mean, I think the general ask is just that, you know, these things, any road project goes through public process, gathering information, and it's a lot of little people and a few community councils making comments, and they're kind of yada yada, have no clout. When the school district speaks and says, make it safe for the kids to cross that street, you guys got some clout and things will happen. No one else does. Community councils don't. All those moms and dads and kids trying to cross, they don't. You guys do. And I know you're so busy, you know, it's a big ask, really, just to comment when these things come up. And it's partly, I mean, we're on AMATS and through this process, we should be notifying you and saying, hey, by the way, mention this crossing, you know. But they would listen if you guys talked. And that would go a long way towards helping. Thanks. And I got to go.
Thank you, Mr. Weddleton. Mr. Holloman?
Yeah, I think everybody knows this is a popular topic at community council meetings. One area that's come up a couple of times, and I have to admit, I don't know where we stop and the city picks up. Obviously, ASD takes care of the sidewalks on our property. For municipal sidewalks out front, I'm not 100% sure. Someone called me one time with a question about the berm at the curb. And this is a case where it wasn't actually on the sidewalk, but as you left the sidewalk, you had to go up on a berm. And he was worried about kids literally sliding down into the street in front of traffic and a similar berm on the other side of the street. And I suspect that our contract with VPOs and whatnot doesn't cover getting past that curb. I'm not 100% sure about the city sidewalk out front. I'm quite certain it doesn't involve going across the street and heading down the block and everything. If ASD and the municipality could get together to try to talk about a way to manage those maintenance activities, because this comes and goes with the warm temperature or cold temperature. It's something parents see and they feel, and unfortunately explaining, well, that's not really our job. I suspect that for the municipality, worrying about berms near schools isn't necessarily on the radar. But we really need to try to think about having a nice path four or five blocks away from all our buildings where kids aren't facing obstacles like that. If there's a committee that addresses that, I'm happy to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Holloman. Mr. Rivera?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, over the years, this has been a big topic of mine, especially as an advocate for public transit. So, you know, it's not just an issue that sidewalks around schools face, this is an issue around the entire municipality. Just based on my conversations that I've had with street maintenance, you know, it is a priority for them whenever we have these weather events, that sort of the number one on their list is to make sure that routes to schools are safe for students. The thing is, when we have such varying weather events, you know, snow, then thaw, then freeze, then rain, then snow, you know, it just creates a situation where the street maintenance just can't catch up. So one of the things that I'm hoping to do after summer, you know, because street maintenance is working, I think as you saw in the news recently, they haven't had a day off in a month. So after everything melts away, one of the things I hope to do is really see how we can address some of these issues that frankly, I think are climate change related. You know, we're seeing things that we just haven't seen before. And maybe that means we need a new way of thinking about street maintenance and providing different sets of resources. So that's a conversation I hope to have in the summer and definitely making sure safe routes to schools are a part of that conversation, I think, will be critical. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Just a question. So as we speak today, is there a list of, are we going to create a list, or does a list exist already of hazardous routes?
On our end, on the Assembly--
On the Assembly's end, yeah. It says here that we would catalog current dangerous crossings and develop a plan.
We have not catalogued those crossings yet. And my suggestion to Assembly members is that we start to do that by identifying, you know, based on some of the feedback we get at community council meetings. We get feedback from PTA members too. And that on our end, we can put that together, we can share it with you, and then have another conversation about how to go from there with that piece of it. All right. Thank you. Thank you, President Bellamy. Does anyone have any suggestions for how else we might move forward in this process? I know Mr. Weddleton, before he was triggered, said, I'm just kidding, nobody knows pedestrian road and planning issues like Mr. Weddleton, and you can match his passion on the subject.
Yes, Madam Chair. And one of the things that he mentioned of kind of just a simple, hey, heads up, this is coming up, because certainly, as you know, with our goals, I mean, all that we're doing, queuing in to like, this might be something, can you, like, requesting if we could be of assistance. I know that we have Heather expertise in our transportation, Tom, but many times it is about the timing that they come up, the schedules, things like that. So I know that we would be happy to assist.
Is there anything that the Assembly or the municipality can do on our end to help you in terms of being notified or in terms--
That's what I mean. As long as we know, if you create that list and then have dates of meetings, we'll get it on the calendars.
Okay, so lists, not just maybe of dangerous crossings or areas, but potential projects corrupt too. Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Oh. I'm so sorry, Ms. Zalatell, that the hand on the screen is really tiny. Go ahead.
No problem. Thank you. I appreciate getting a moment. So I have two suggestions, and one is that we create a small work group between the board and the Assembly, particularly perhaps with at least one of the Policy Committee members for AMATS on that work group. I won't volunteer myself or Mr. Weddleton. I'll let us look for it. But we can bring to bear the knowledge we have about AMATS. We can help elevate the issues at the right time. But it seems like if we, we've been going at it a little bit piecemeal, so I'm wondering if there isn't, you know, two Assembly members and two board members, or whatever the right makeup is, if can't figure out a way to do that liaison with AMATS traffic and student transportation so that once we start to get our list together, we can start to strategically figure out how we want to leverage various opportunities that might be available.
Thank you, Ms. Zalatell. And I think we should just come back to this question. I know Mr. Donnelly is in the queue about if there's interest and will to develop a work group, or maybe just a quick-- Or maybe just a quick poll? Nod, yes?
Yes. Remember, Holloman's already volunteered for the board.
Excellent.
We need one more person. And we'll get that to you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Zalatell. Mr. Donnelly? No, or? Oh, you passed. Okay. Any other comments on this topic? I don't see any other hands raised. I don't see any other hands raised online. So we can move on then to item G2, ASD Spring Update. President Bellamy?
Yes.
Dr. Bishop?
Thank you. I was just checking to see if we had any visuals, but did want to share with the Assembly that, as, this is spring break. Today is a teacher grading day, and so they'll finish their third quarter grades, and we'll have nine weeks of school left. And at the middle of, beginning to middle of May, we are doing graduations in large facilities. Again, it really is efficient for us to, for financial reasons, as well as safety, security planning. We are utilizing the Alaska Airlines Center this year. So we wanted to share prior to moving to this large facility. Last year, we did outside. We, I think we made it by the Skidmore, withholding away from the rain and the wind. But of course, you do understand that Sullivan Arena was used prior to that time. We will have somewhat limited tickets, six to eight tickets, a family, which met their needs last year when we had to give tickets for outdoor celebrations as well. But that is one of our biggest festivities, if you will, and rites of passage for our students, so we're happy to offer this. And of course, in the future, you know, discussions about utilizing the Sullivan Arena when it's available could occur at that time, but we wanted to be, to share that.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Is there anything else on this item? We're down to about three minutes, and so we'll go next to member comments. We had a couple of members who had to leave. I see that Ms. Kennedy and Ms. Allard are on Zoom, so we'll start first with Ms. Kennedy. Any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, let me just say thank you to everyone, especially to the school board and the superintendent and the staff of the Anchorage School District. You know, these are always pretty good meetings. I'm sorry, got a little, I don't know what the word is. Yeah, anyway, sometimes there are difficult conversations, but I think we do ourselves good if we just stick with things and get through to the end of them, and I think that's what happened here today, so that was good. And again, there's so many things I know we kept talking about, and we will at other meetings again. But I just really do appreciate where the school board and the district is at right now. And anyway, just wish everybody well for the end of the year. Looking forward to a couple graduations myself, so. Thank you all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. I will go to President Bellamy.
Yes, we're running out of time again. I move to extend five more minutes, and everybody keep their comments to 30 seconds.
Second.
Move to extend by five minutes, seconded with the caveat of 30-second comments by the rest of the room. And seeking unanimous consent, seeing no opposition, we're extended. We will go next to Ms. Allard for comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to say again, thank you, Dina. I really appreciate all your hard work and the hard decisions that you've been having to make. Jim Anderson, you're awesome, and you're a wonderful neighbor, and I appreciate everything that you've had to do. Mr. Holloman, your comments were noted, and I really appreciate your comments as well. The school board and everybody else is working really hard to make sure we get a great district and a better district. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. Mr. Donnelly?
I just want to thank Anchorage taxpayers and the municipality for outstanding support for our schools. And just to be clear, despite some of the voices the district has heard from our community, there is no schools-to-prison pipeline in the Anchorage School District. Absolutely not.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Ms. Wilson?
I just want to echo the thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation with the Assembly. So thank you all for taking the time, and thank you for the hard work you're doing. I really understand. Have a much better understanding of that now.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mr. Peterson?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank everyone for their time commitment today and their preparation. And I specifically want to thank Superintendent Dina Bishop for her years of excellent service to the people of Anchorage and to all our students, and good luck in your future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Holloman?
Thank the Assembly for their continued support, and I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Holloman. Thank you, Mr. Holloman. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to echo thanks. And then we were discussing earlier today as to if the district situation is currently safe. My hope, our collective takeaway is that the time for thoughtful consideration, advocacy, and action truly is right now, before we're standing at the edge of this education funding fiscal cliff. I hope the slides prepared by the district highlight that if the Assembly and our entire community value the current level of service provided to our students and families, we really have a big hill to climb. I respectfully request that the fiscal reality that we're in drive and provide a background for every conversation which occurs going forward regarding ASD operations, and I appreciate the in-depth and data-driven conversation today. I'm looking forward to more in the days, weeks, and months to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things really quick. First is, several of us were in June or over the last couple of weeks, are meeting virtually with legislators. And just speaking for myself, school funding never actually came into the conversations, and that's sort of like a bad Felix. You know, I don't think that's just a thing that we ever really think about advocating for as Assembly members. So maybe there's some programmatic way that we can just institutionalize. Whenever we talk to legislators, is make sure to talk about education as well. And then second thing is, I really appreciate all of the conversations that we have in this meeting. You know, this wasn't the first heated meeting that we've had in a joint school board and Assembly meeting. But I always feel like whenever we have these heated conversations, it leads to good outcomes, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, and I want to extend a thank you. I have one more meeting. That's a joint meeting before I move on to be a grandma. But I do want it noted that very few school districts in the state of Alaska fund their local communities to 100% of the allowable contribution. And ASD is one of those that have done it year after year after year. And so the support from the community through its legislative body, government body, is very supportive of its schools. And for that, we are fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. President Bellamy?
Sure. Assemblyman Rivera, I would gladly send you a copy of our legislative priorities. They are on our website, but yes, we could use all the help we could get. And I just wanted to give a just quick update on the search for the new superintendent. We have 23 applicants, which we will be narrowing down to two over the next two weeks. When that happens, there will be community opportunities for additional input by way of impression forms. So that would be another community collaboration that the board will be planning. So with that, pass to you.
Thank you, President Bellamy, and I just want to say thank you to everyone for joining this meeting today and to the administration for the information you shared and the discussion, and also to school board members and the administration for your excellent work in extraordinarily challenging times, what with COVID, what with budget constraints, and just the general difficulties of school safety and so on. So thank you, and thank you to your teachers as well. And I do want to add that I am aligned with my fellow Assembly members, those of us who overrode the veto to fund the school resource officers. And I look forward to working with board members and the administration on that and fully support the municipality paying the cost of the Anchorage Police Department officers in the schools. So again, thank you all for being here today. Thank you to Ms. Grant and Ms. Viniklason, who made everything work so smoothly. I understand that we do not have anyone signed up for public comments. Is that correct, President? Okay, and I will just note that June 3, 2022, is the next upcoming joint meeting. It will be here, and then the one after that will be September 9, 2022. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
We are adjourned. Have a great day and a nice weekend.
Thank you.